Hi, my name's Jim Hayes and I'm Superintendent of Schools here in Newmarket. I thought I'd take a moment to introduce a program that hopefully you'll take the time to watch. On November 19th, the Joint School Boards of SAU 16, which involves Exeter and surrounding towns, hosted a meeting with all the area legislators to have a conversation about legislation and things happening at the state level and how it impacts financing and education at the local level. And it was a terrific discussion that I think is of value for community members to see. We obtained this from SAU 16. I know Cliff Chase and Chet Jablonsky from our school board attended the meeting. And if you saw our recent school board meeting, you know they commented about the discussion that was there. So please take the time to watch and learn because education is not just affected by what we do at the local level, it really is affected by what happens at the state level. So you have to pay attention to both places if you really want to stay involved with what's happening in education. Hope you enjoy the show.
So I'm going to call the meeting to order and start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks very much and thank you so much for everyone who's here. We're going to go around and all of our board members are going to introduce ourselves briefly. And we're going to be introducing our legislators and guests a little later on when we get to that part of the agenda. So why don't we start with the Cooperative Board down at the center.
Mark Portman, Stratum Co-op Board.
Dave Miller, Co-op Board from East Kingston.
Joni Reynolds, Co-op Board Kensington.
Maggie Bishop, Co-op Board Exeter.
Alicia Essau, Newfield Co-op Board.
Helen Joyce Stradham, Co-op Board.
Erin Lee Stradham, School Board.
Travis Thompson, then Chair of the Stratum Memorial School Board.
Kate Miller, Exeter and Co-op School Board.
Tracy Jeffers, the Exeter School Board.
Kathy McNeil, Exeter School Board.
Patrick O'Dea, then Chair of the Exeter School Board.
Bob Nygrello, Chair of the East Kingston School Board.
John Maxwell, Exeter School District.
Charlotte Gargally, Brentwood School Board.
Linda Geary, Brentwood School Board.
Alice Moore, Kensington School Board.
Art Draby, Kensington School Board.
Michael Morgan, the School Superintendent.
Great, thank you very much. The next item, we're moving along, is the introduction of our state legislators and yes. And I'm going to ask Phil Donahue here to carry the roving microphone into the audience. When we first scheduled this event, we've had a couple of these in past years, we found them very productive to have a conversation with our school board and school administrators and our candidates for elected office in the state. We originally scheduled this for the day that Superstorm Sandy hit, so we rescheduled it. At that time, folks were either sitting legislators or candidates for office, and now we know how those elections have come out. So first off, congratulations to everyone who was elected to office. We're certainly very fortunate to have very, very capable legislators and many exciting newcomers coming to represent our area. So if Mr. Morgan, you wouldn't mind bringing the mic around?
Sure. What I'd like to do is ask any of the people who are legislators among us, the please stand, and I'll take the microphone around and just have you introduce yourselves. Again, we are being recorded tonight, just to let you know that this is Doug York, who's our videographer, so this is going to be on our local people access television station. So I'll give you the microphone and maybe you can pass it among yourselves and then I'll take it at the end.
I'm Dawn Schlapman. I represent Exeter, going back into my third term, and this is probably my third similar meeting where I expect to hear pretty much the same issues and hope that we can get some resolution to many of them this time around. Thank you.
I'm Alix Lockhart. I'm returning after a gap of four years and back to the House and very anxious to support education as a former educator myself.
I'm Pat Abrami, 29-year resident of Stratum. As of now, I'm representing Exeter, Stratum, and North Hampton, but it is December 5th I represent just Stratum after redistricting. And I have some things I will say when we get to the pension discussion because I was on a special committee looking at pensions.
Hi, I'm Frank Heffron, newly elected representative for Exeter. Nice to be here. I expect to learn a lot.
Hi there, my name's Chris Munz. I am a representative-elect from Hampton and looking forward to hearing what's on your mind this evening and hopefully we can do some good work in the next couple of years.
And I am State Senator Nancy Stiles for District 24 currently and for the new district 24 as well. I'm also currently the Chair of Senate Education and I hope to return to that position when we go back in January. Education is my passion and so I look forward to doing anything that we can to make the opportunity for every child, every child, to be successful.
My name's Kevin St. James and is a parent of a middle schooler and a high school student, and my wife is a teacher. And I spent three years on the school board at Sandbourne Regional District and currently elected in Kingston and Hampton. Thank you for being here and inviting me.
Hi, my name's Bob Nygrello, newly elected to represent East Kingston, Kensington, and Southampton, also a member of this esteemed board in front of you, the Co-op Board.
My name's Jeff Harris. I'm a representative-elect from Epping. I also sit on the school board in Epping.
Derek Gooden, newly elected rep for District 35, East Kingston, Kensington, Southampton, and Newton in Bomeridge.
Thank you very much. I'd like to introduce the members of our administrative team for SAU 16 who are here tonight, just to give you a perspective of some of the other folks who are here. Mr. Paul Flynn is in the back of the room. Mr. Flynn is our Associate Superintendent and Director of Human Resources. We have Sandy McDonald. Sandy is the Assistant Superintendent for, in our case, the SAU, but she also works directly with the Stratum Board. Amy Ransom, Amy is the Business Administrator for SAU 16 and she's here with us. Margaret Callahan is in the back. Margaret is the Principal of the CECO School of Technology and we're grateful to her for hosting our meeting here tonight. That's been very, very important. We have another Assistant Superintendent, Esther Azbell, who is not here because you'll notice from the board tonight, because this meeting had to be rescheduled, the Newfield School Board is meeting tonight. So Esther is there with the school board, that's why we have known, recognized her from Newfields. Some of my, Mr. Bill Perkins is here. Mr. Bill Perkins is a member of the administration. He's an Assistant Principal over at the Cooperative Middle School, so we're happy to have those folks. Now, I know in the audience, we have some of my superintendent colleagues who have agreed to come tonight, and I'd like to introduce them and have them introduce any members of their board who might be here with them. So first, I have the superintendents who are here, please stand, and then we'll pass the microphone around and let them introduce whomever they would like. Barbara Muntz.
Good evening, my name is Barbara Muntz. I'm the Superintendent for the Epping District, and I'm here with Jeff, which already introduced himself as a new member.
Good evening, I'm Kathleen Murphy, Superintendent of Schools for the Hampton School District. Unfortunately, we have an event back in Hampton, so my board isn't here, but I'm thrilled to be here too and thanks for the invitation.
Good evening, thank you, Mr. Morgan. Brian Blake, Superintendent of Schools for Sandbourne Regional School District, and I don't see my board rep here this evening, he may show up a little later.
Laura Nelson, Superintendent of the Derry School District, and I have my board Chair Brenda Willis with me this evening. And thank you for hosting, and again, it's very helpful to all of us. Mr. Morgan.
Thank you, Ms. Nelson. I do know that we have Chet Jablonsky who's from the Newmarket School District. Chet, you want to say that? Are there any on the board who could introduce themselves here too, Chet? Any other board members?
That's Chase, Chairman of the Newmarket School Board.
Good evening, Jim Hayes is our Superintendent. He is at an event back in Newmarket. We took the opposite road and made him stay home.
Good. We call it divide and conquer too, very, very much. Other folks who are here, anybody else would like to introduce themselves to our audience?
Thanks, Mike. I'm Jean Monahan. I am a member of the RISE School Board and of SAU 50, and our Superintendent would have been here tonight, but because they're rescheduling, the Greenland School Board is tonight, so that's where he is. Thanks, Mike.
Patrice, you want to talk about the CECO's Learning Collaborative?
Hi, I'm Patrice Jammer, one of the co-directors of CECO's Learning Collaborative, which is down in Brentwood, New Hampshire, a school for private nonprofit for students with emotional, behavioral, and developmental disorders. Most of our students come from our local public schools.
We took the lady to your left to introduce herself too, just for the fun of it.
I'm Jamie Point and I'm relatively new to Exeter and I thought I'd come to this meeting so I could learn about the school district.
You did that change as well, told me. We got to have, we're here from Wendy with Card for Keith at least, right Wendy?
Well, I'm an alumni of Exeter. I just wanted to let you know, classes 71 first. But I teach at the middle school. This is my 38th year of teaching, but my 35th year at Exeter. So I just have, I'm a family consumer science teacher and I'm very supportive of vocational school as well as anything else that the children decide because I have all 500 of them as they leave the middle school.
Would anyone else like to introduce themselves before we go on? I don't want to put anybody on the spot. Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. How would you like to proceed from here? I have a brief presentation that I could make and then we could go on to the discussion if you'd like, but.
No, that's fine. I have a few brief comments as well, so please, why don't you go ahead first?
I've got this slide presentation. It's on some sort of salmon-colored paper behind you folks. If anybody would like a copy of that, I have enough copies for all the members of the board too, and somebody could pass those out. We have some additional information on the back, which involves the annual report from SAU 16 and some information about the CECO School of Technology. We'd be happy to pass that. But this presentation is brief and it's designed to just give you some information about some of the things that are going on at SAU 16 and some of the things that are impacting us with regard to the legislature in New Hampshire. We really are appreciative of all the members of the community who are able to join us. We have some students who are going to be speaking and offering some of their own comments tonight, but we just want to let you know some of the concerns that we have going forward. On the presentation you'll see here, entitled as Downshifts to SAU 16 and the Impact to Local Taxpayers, and I think that's one of the things that we're really concerned about because there are some things that we really appreciate the state doing for us, but it's also important to realize that some of the things that have happened of late bring great concern to the taxpayers of SAU 16. First and foremost on this overview, just to give you a little bit of a perspective, SAU 16 is really comprised of six different towns over 82 square miles. They are all contiguous to each other, but we do run seven independent school districts, seven independent school boards. We really have eight school boards. If you think about this particular board, we're in front of tonight is the SAU Joint Board. This is our eighth board. We have four budget committees, 11 unions, 11 collective bargaining associations, who are really the third largest SAU in the state of New Hampshire. SAU means School Administrative Unit. We're the third largest in the count of the number of students. Only Manchester and Nashua have more children than their SAU than we do. If you include our kids who come from some of our sending districts for the CECO School of Technology, we're over 6,000 students in SAU 16. Just again, give you that perspective. We're really grateful to the state of New Hampshire for the adequate education funds that are provided to us. And you'll see where our total budget for the SAU, and I'm including all the budgets for the independent school districts for the SAU, the Co-op, which for us runs grades 6 through 12, also runs the CECO School of Technology, Adult Education, Alternative Education. The Co-op is over 52 million out of the entire budget that we have of 86 million. And this is the amount of money, as you see on the chart, that we have received from state adequate education grants over the last few years. There was talk last year about having a constitutional amendment, and I'm sure that that will probably come up again in Concord. The whole concept, at least the way I understand the constitutional amendment, would be able to allow the legislature to choose where that money would actually go, and it would not be sent around to everybody in the state necessarily. There's been a lot of talk of what we call targeted aid, to target those communities in the state that really need the education, or excuse me, the education funding more. One of my concerns as the Superintendent of SAU 16 is that because our communities are very well populated with people who are of reasonably good means, is that some of the money for adequate education in SAU 16 would be lost because that money would then have to be shifted to other districts in the state. My hometown is Berlin, and I come from the North Country, and my hometown certainly could use the money. There's no doubt about that. When I grew up up there, about 18,000 or 19,000 people, there's probably under 10,000 today, and the schools have suffered dramatically. That would be a great example of a place where targeted aid would be very helpful as with places like Claremont and Franklin and Newport. But there are places around here, SAU 16, that are evidence of a lot of need, and my concern would be if we had a constitutional amendment, that some of this money would be lost. But we are really grateful to the state for being able to provide that amount of money. Your slide that you have in front of you shows the amount of adequate education funds by district, so that if certain districts were to lose money, that money would have to be made up. If we kept the budget exactly the same, that money would have to be made up in a different form, most likely at the local property tax level. So if there were money, for example, I'm just looking at the town of Exeter, if you'll see in the fiscal year 2013, they're getting $1,800,000. If that money were to be lost to the town of Exeter, that would be a dramatic tax impact for the town of Exeter, and those things are of real concern to us here in SAU 16. Building aid is something that the state provides for us, and building aid under the old formula was awarded based on the approval of projects by the local voters. We here in SAU 16 have been very fortunate to have some excellent facilities, not the least of which is the high school or the cooperative middle school. Those facilities have really served our students very, very well. Exeter High School now has about 1,750 students. The cooperative middle school is over 1,350. If we did not have the facilities that we have now, it would be very, very difficult to provide an adequate education for those students. And you'll see where the amount of money that we have received from building aid is very much appreciated and very helpful. Some of the numbers have gone down here, as you'll see, primarily because in some of the years, you'll see where there's a drop from 2011 to 2012 to 2013, because some of the projects that had been bonded were paid off, and part of that money had decreased. And yet you'll still see that there's certainly been a decrease in the amount of building aid that would be provided. In some cases, the state has not had the ability to provide 100% of the funding during that fiscal year. It has however made up that money for the most part, and we've been able to make our debt payments in a reasonable way. An entry timer system is the thing that really has been a great concern to my colleagues, and not only you here in the audience, but those of us around the state, who are very concerned about the state's changing system. Retirement is really one of those very difficult things that cause a lot of concern, not only for the public employees, but also for those folks around the, in the private sector who have to depend on retirement. We have more and more people who are aging, as many of you know. We have a lot of people here in SAU 16 who are working and they are in the 58 to 62 or 63-year age range, and they're going to be retiring. The column I'd like to really sort of call your attention to is, it says the district share, and you can see where, oops, the district share number, you'll see in 2005, 2006 was 3.7%. What that really means is that a person's salary might be $40,000 or $50,000, the district has to pay 3.7% of that person's salary into the fund, into the fund. That's what it means. Well, you'll notice, and you get down to the column from 2005, 2006 to 2013 or 14 or 14 and 15, you can see where that 3.7% has changed dramatically and has had a tremendous impact on local property taxpayers. The column where it says percentage of change is also something that might be worthwhile. You'll see from 2006, 2007 to 2007, 2008, that when we went from 3.7 to 5.8, that was actually a 56% increase in the cost of retirement. It was a 56% increase in the cost of retirement. And you can down the column, you'll see right now, we're dealing with the issue of the second number from the bottom, the second row from the bar, 25.31. We're looking at a 25% increase between last year and this year. And again, that's having tremendous impact on a lot of our budgets around the state. And again, it also is impacting towns. I'm talking about school districts, but municipalities, cities and towns are seeing that same shift, sometimes bigger numbers, when it comes to police and fire. And I don't want that to be lost to us, but you'll see where some of those are. The next slide is a graph, which you have, and you'll see basically the gray line, the gray line shows the district's share and how that's increased. The red line on the graph, which you have a black and white copy, shows the state's share. And you'll see that beginning in 2011, 2012, the state paid nothing, paid nothing, so that the district had to pay the full amount of those costs. And that again has a significant impact on us as a school district and as individual SAUs. Catastrophic Aid. Catastrophic Aid is funding that's provided to meet the requirements of dealing with some students who have high special ed needs, high special ed needs. The law insists that students from 3 to 21, ages 3 to 21, are educated in a free and appropriate public education in the least restrictive alternative. That's a federal law as well as a state law. And the way it works basically is that local districts in a nutshell are pretty much responsible for three and a half times, three and a half times the state average tuition for a student. So if the average tuition, just in round numbers, to make it easy, is $12,000, the state says that the local district is responsible for three and a half times that. So 12, 24, 36, and then another 6,000, so over 42,000. So local districts pay 42,000. I don't want to bore you with the complex formula beyond that, but essentially it says, the state says, we will pick up most of the balance beyond three and a half times the state average tuition. So what happens is that local districts, like ours, like the ones that were represented here tonight, turn around and bill the state. We invoice the state at the end of the fiscal year and say, hey, this is how much we've spent, over and above three and a half times the state average tuition. And you'll see here where in 2004, 2005, SAU 16, all of our districts together, billed the state for $538,000. Well, the state decides that they didn't have enough money because they had to balance their own budget, which I totally understand, so they gave us 71% of the money that we were supposed to get. So we lost, but we didn't have the difference, 154,000. That's what that slide is showing. We did not have the 154,000. And you go down all the way to the bottom line, in 2011, 2012, this past year, we built the state for $588,117.65. We have been told that we will only get 31% of the money this year, getting 31%. So that there's a difference of $404,000 that we have to recoup someplace, and that someplace is usually on the backs of the local taxpayers, the property taxpayers. And part of the reason why taxes go up, that's part of it. Basically, it says we've got 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8 years there, over a million dollars, over a million dollars we've had to shift to local taxpayers because the state did not have the money in its coffers to meet its obligations, which they promised us. But it's no like, it's no difference than the federal government in a lot of ways, and I want to stress that. Since 1975, I've been around a long time, but even when I was a young teacher, 1975, '76, when Public Law 94, 142 passed the federal government, the federal government said they would pay, it would pay, the 40%, 4-0% of the cost of implementing Public Law 94, 142. Well, I'm happy to report that at no time in the last 35 years have they ever come close to 20%. So they said they were going to do 40. They didn't even do 20, and constantly the local districts continued to have to pick up the balance. That is a real problem because again, the local taxpayers, especially in a state like New Hampshire, where we have to rely heavily, almost exclusively, on local property taxes, that burden goes to the local folks. And that's one of the things that we've had, we have to, we call that sort of an unfunded mandate. It's a mandate that we're told to do, and yet the funding is not there to make that happen, and therefore our taxpayers end up having to pay the biggest burden. You'll just see, this is, this is the next slide, talks about the percentage that has been lost, the percentage as it goes down. The top line horizontally is 100%. Well, all it's showing is that since 2004, 2005, even before we had the economic problems that we've had of late in the last three or four years, even before they did do it. And I'm telling you, it's a real difficult challenge for us and for all school districts around the state. I just want to say thanks for coming. I really want to give you the opportunity to have your own comments and thoughts. I'm sure some of our folks present, I'm sure some of our school board members, Madam Chair, might like to say something. I know we have some students here, and I'll leave this microphone here for somebody to pick up and talk, and I'll just shut that off. We'll turn the lights on. Thank you very much.
That sounds very good. At this time, I'd like to ask Kate Teedle, Representative of Exeter School Board, if she has some guests, maybe had earlier event texts than some of us, and maybe she can speak first.
Thank you. Fancy speaking here and have them come up to where you are, Mr. Morgan.
Sure. Feel weird, sitting, standing, I don't know what to do. Over the last two years, balancing a school district's budget has been very difficult for us, just as difficult, I'm sure, balancing a state budget has been for all of you. When we balance our budget, it has resulted in a loss not just in terms of an SAU or in terms of a district or a school building. It's not just a net loss measured in programs being cut, like SST's Technology Career Program and half of their computer program. It's not just six positions that have been cut, it's six teaching and staff positions. It includes the entire career advisor, the English teacher, and two teaching assistants. But the real net loss is to the students. The real net loss should be defined in terms of their future and our ability to ensure that they are college and career ready. And I thought that you would appreciate hearing from three of those students that I think we have here today, I tried to get four, but we have, some students have been elected to their student councils, one from Lincoln Elementary School and two from the Southern Lower Middle School, and they all have prepared something to share with you today because they want you to remember them and to know that the decisions that you make up in Concord affects their future. So I am asking them to come up near Mr. Morgan, and they I think are ready to introduce themselves, and they have each prepared a speech for you. So if the three students could join Mr. Morgan, I'd appreciate that.
Why don't you speak to the school board, okay? And I'll give you the microphone, and I'm sure you'll do great. Tell them who you are and what grade you're in and your comments.
Hi, my name's Brenna Van Sant. I'm 14 years old and I'm 8th grader at the Cooperative Middle School. I'm a member of the Student Advisory Council as of this year, and I'm going to talk to you about budget cuts and school funding. So as I was growing up, my mom and dad always asked me, so Brenna, what do you want to do when you get older? And as I got older, the answers would differ between a princess, a president, a teacher, an astronaut. And as you enter CMS, you start to think about what you actually want to do with your life and what you're actually going to pursue as you exit CMS and enter whatever high school you choose to apply for and attend. And what if after high school, you don't really know what to do? And since the CECO School of Technology is losing so many positions so quickly that by the time our 6th and 7th graders attend high school, the SST school will not have any programs if the cuts continue the way that they happen. And an article stated that this year they're planning to cut $423,000 off of funding for the school, and the students rely on 90% of their tuition from funds, and you can imagine the effect of what will happen to the students and their success rates if they're not allowed to pursue their passions. And my purpose here isn't to make you feel bad and want to give all of your money away. And my purpose here isn't to make you feel bad and want to give all of your money away, but even giving a little money will make a big difference to even one student. And there are many ways that you can give, even if you do it at home, like how many of you have kids here? I'm sure, I don't know if you. Even if they do their chores, if they don't do their chores, I'm not sure, but if they do do their chores, or if they make a mistake, you could have them put even just a quarter in a jar. And as the money accumulates, you can bring it to your work and challenge your employees to put even more in the jar. And it can help out students a lot. And I'd like to thank you for having me here. That's all I have to say.
Hi, my name's Sage Courtney. I'm a sixth grader at CMS. I'm about one of the 26th grade Student Advisory Council representatives. I'm also a member of a student council that includes sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. I'm here to talk about SST cuts. When I heard cuts were being made in our school district, I thought about my future, about my friend's future, and about all the people in my school. Cutting programs in our school hurts the future generations. When current eighth graders are able to enroll in SST, they may have less options. If cuts are made in the same case they are now, seventh graders will have even less options. I'm a sixth grader now. If these cuts keep occurring, I will have less options when I am able to enroll in SST. Many of these students who graduate from SST are able to carry jobs immediately in work in our community. We, as citizens, need this skilled workforce. For example, nurses who are licensed nursing assistants upon graduation, construction workers, car mechanics, et cetera. By cutting these programs, these students will not have learned the skills to compete for jobs immediately in this workforce. Many other students are fully prepared to enter college and study engineering or other medical programs where needs are high. These skills they learn at SST enable them to compete for spots in top-ranked schools. What about my grade? Do you think that by the time my sixth-grade classmates and I are able to enroll in SST, that we will have this opportunity if the cuts keep taking place? Many programs and learning opportunities could be gone. How about our state? If you knew that cutting these programs hurts the future generations, would you still go ahead and make these cuts? Education is so important in our lives, so why would you start writing it down? If you hope the future generations now, you're helping yourself for the future too. We all need successful working adults to have strong community, state, and country. Please completely consider the proposed cuts to SST and help me fill as many opportunities to learn when I grow older. Then I will be able to help you.
Hi, my name's Bobby Seagull, and I'm here to talk about the cuts. I'm a fifth grader at Lincoln Street Elementary School. I was elected president of our student council. I want to let you know that my friends and I are really good at math, science, and we're good with computers. We need the SST programs. When I grow up, I want to work with animals. Hopefully, it will follow, which is a place in Maine or somewhere, I don't know. We will be supporting animal science, we'll be supporting animal science at SST when I'm in high school. Can I take courses to learn about animals? And culinary, so my friends can learn to cook, like my cousin Mike, who just graduated college. I know you need to balance a budget. But I need you to know that I need to be college and career ready when I will be, I will be in high school in four years. Please help.
Thank you, Madam Chair. They can probably go home with their public side.
Yes, they have parents that can escort them out. Thank you very much for coming. Really appreciate it. Very grateful. I think it's helpful to put in perspective some of the numbers that Mr. Morgan was talking about and some of the elimination of positions, particularly, you mentioned at SST. Each time there's a kind of about, you know, plus or minus $100,000 in a school budget or an increase in other costs where we need to find savings, that's pretty roughly equivalent to a teacher, when you add in all of the benefits and retirement and health insurance and things that we have for our teachers. So each time our costs increase in other areas, we need to look for savings in our budgets. Our budgets are almost entirely personnel. Our costs are mostly the people that we hire. So we're not spending a lot on, you know, pencils and books these days and keeping our budgets in terms of the other areas really very much in control. But some of the areas over which we don't have control continue to increase. We haven't talked a lot about the health insurance increases, but there have been increases in our projected health insurance premiums for this coming year. Bob McGraw's going to do a little bit, an explanation on some of the work that we've been doing in that area. But it's important to remember that each time there's a shortfall in budget or additional costs replaced in the district, the place we need to look to cut is going to be in the people because that's where the money is in our budgets. And each $100,000 is a teacher. So if we have a $600,000 gap between, you know, last year's budget and this year's, then the Exeter Regional Cooperative School District for the high school and middle school is going to look at, you know, where we find six teachers. If we have another, you know, increase of a percentage in our health insurance costs, you know, we need to look at more teachers. So that's really the, you know, the hard, cold fact of what these numbers mean in our budgets. So Bob, is this a good time? Bob, do you want to speak to some of the compensation issues at this point?
I could certainly do that.
Would you come up and use the microphone, Bob, that's on the podium, please?
He's shuttling back and forth between the audience position and the board position since he has two roles here tonight. Bob is chair of our compensation committee, which has reviewed compensation and focused in particular on health insurance for the SAU for the last, he said, two years?
Three years.
Three years. Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. We've used a consultant over the past three years by the name of IPG, and we retained him in 2012, '13 to review our 2011 claims and to project the effect of those claims on our '13, '14 healthcare rates. IPG was also tasked to report on the effect of plan design changes made in the 2012, '13 school year. IPG delivered a report to Paul Flynn, Kate Miller, me, myself, on October 4th of this year. The copies of the reports, the binders, is available. The report details the costs provided by provider, procedure, and also all of our drug costs. A little bit of background, collectively, we insure approximately 820 employees with over 600, 1,600 participants in the program. So that's spouses, childrens, et cetera. Now, the good news was the plan design changes incorporated in 2013 in employee contracts without the, within the SAU and its employees, we're seeing sizable cost reductions in this current year. These plan design changes include higher drug costs, office co-pays, as well as shifting programs to the HMO coverage. The IPG report estimates that our '13, '14 cost increase, that was ahead of the GMR that we recently received from LGC, would be approximately 11.5%. Since that IPG report, we've now received our guaranteed maximum rate with a 15% increase, as we all know. After two manageable increases of less than 5%, we're back to double digits increases in healthcare costs, as had been the norm over the past 10-plus years. The report details the reason for the increase simply. Our collective claims for SAU 16 increased 16% from 2010 to 2011, from 9.9 million to 11.4 million. The drivers of the increase, for an 80% increase in large claimants, a large claimant is one with costs over $50,000. The large claiming group is also viewed as a driver of future costs and as a primary reason for this 15% increase in our guaranteed maximum. The baseline LGC medical trend was 8.3%. So if we had the same cost as last year, we'd have about an 8.3%. But because our claims increased almost 15%, that is the estimate for our guaranteed The SAU loss ratio was 92%, and 85% would be considered an even split to the medical care providers, thus the large increase in GMR. Now, we can, we can, we can give anyone copies of this. I know some of you have also received the binders. And we had actually stopped meeting as a compensation committee because we thought we had a healthcare cost under control because we were under 5% for the last two years. So my recommendation to this board is that we need to reconvene, we need to have the committee started up again, and we need to look at our costs, how to control them, and especially with the Affordable Healthcare Act upon us, and that there are some positives and some negatives in that. And we need to understand them so that we can then go back and make recommendations to each school board. So that's the report on the compensation committee.
Thanks very much. I think it's really important to note that those changes to the health plans were done collaboratively with the representatives of the teachers' unions, I don't know if there were any care professionals in that particular group, but those were all done working with our employees. These were not changes that were, you know, imposed in a top-down way because we don't, we're not able to do that, and that's not the best way to go. So these were changes that were adopted after consultation with the unions and are part of collective bargaining agreements. So in terms of, are we doing everything that we can on our end to try to keep our costs framed in? We absolutely are, and this past year has shown that there had been some significant savings from those shifts in plans. So, you know, we're doing our bit, working with our employees who've done their bit, and yet, we're still faced with a, you know, 15% increase going forward for next year.
So there may be members of our audience, Madam Chair, some of my superintendent colleagues or the board members, or maybe some of the legislators here, that would like to present their own comments or ask some questions of us. I would entertain however you'd like to attend.
Why don't we hear from some of our guests, and then maybe we can start a dialogue with some of the members of the boards who are here, our board and other districts that are here. So Donna, I see you raising your hand. Do you want to come up to the podium? Thank you. So Donna has been serving her, this is her third term, she's been elected to.
Should be on the floor.
Okay. Good, thank you.
So I heard you say, Superintendent Morgan, that you had a large number of your staff that were in the 53 to 62.
Fifty, I said 58 to 62 or 63, your age.
Okay, so there's a certain amount that you're expecting that will go to the retirement system pretty soon, which challenges that end. But I'm wondering if there's any actuarial data or something that would inform you as to how this will impact, because you'll be hiring other teachers, some of them younger and some of them maybe better health. Because I also heard you say that one of the challenges that drove up the cost were the fact that you had very heavy users. So I'm thinking there are people my age that have illnesses or chronic conditions that tax the system, so you've got that 92% loss ratio as opposed to the 85 that insurance carriers want to see. So I don't know if anybody missed that.
Let me answer your question if I may. Bob, you want to answer that first?
I could just say that the consultant IPG does a pretty thorough job. It's about a 500-page report. In that, when we started this committee three years ago, one of the things that we were concerned about is exactly what you said. What is the age of the average employee? What is the age of the dependents? We actually run about a year lower in age than LGC book business. So the average age in LGC is about 37, and we run about 35. When you look at all of the measures of health, SAU 16 runs in the excellent category. Smoking, obesity, recreation, we're off the charts in participation. So I think that we have been doing everything we can be as far as wellness to help the collective employee and their dependents to be healthy. And unfortunately, Mother Nature and genes just come into play and things happen. So when you look at that book of information, and it is truly a book, it says that we're younger, we're healthier, and we still have these cost increases. If anyone's been involved in healthcare the last three, four, five years when we started this committee, we never expected to see what we saw. 10, 12, 15% over the last 12 years. We made some changes, we demanded some changes from LGC. We all know LGC has some issues, and I think we were able to leverage our book of business to get a reasonable rate the last two years. We knew that end was coming, and with our claims so high, we see the increases. Now, someone may ask, "Well, what about the return of some of the funds with LGC?" Well, they're going to be minimum. They will not impact the $14 million that we collectively pay both SAU 16 and its employees. It'll be a small percentage, 2 or 3%.
And Donna, just to add to what Bob said, do we have a little over 1,200 employees in SAU 16? And what's interesting is that we're finding that some folks who might have thought about retiring a few years ago are choosing not to retire primarily because of the health insurance costs and health insurance benefits. The state retirement system used to have, as many of you know, a health insurance subsidy, where if folks retired up to, it was about five, six years ago, would get 50% of their health insurance paid for. That money has gone. So folks today are sticking around a little bit longer. We really have not done any specific studies exactly as to where folks are, but we do know that folks are not retiring where they probably would have a few years ago because of health insurance costs.
Mike, just a question. There's 1,200 employees, you said, in SAU 16, and that's all the districts?
Yes.
And there's about 6,000 students?
Correct. Right. Now, again, that includes, remember, the whole year of administrative custodial workers and all that, and Donna includes substitute workers.
Another point that I think is important to keep in mind, we're all, I think everyone in this room is some, is in favor of education, we think education is important, but looking at it from strictly a dollars and cents perspective, a strong educational system in New Hampshire is very good for our economy. We're here in the SST, and you saw placards on the walls coming in in terms of the programs that are provided at the SECO School of Technology, which serves a region even beyond the Exeter area, with welding and computer programming and animal and plant science, automotive technologies. The programs in the school are designed to fill the needs in the state. Employers are more likely to locate the state if we have a well-educated workforce. If we have students that are, you know, ready to move into those jobs, they're more likely to come here and create them. It really is, you know, it's good for the kids, but it's also good for all the taxpayers too. The importance of putting money into training to get our workers ready for high-tech jobs and the demands of the 21st century economy. Looking, we've been talking a lot about that sort of career-ready stuff, but I also want to talk about the importance of putting money in at a very early age, when we are responsible, as Superintendent said, for children starting at age three. And early intervention programs, a dollar spent in reaching those students before age five pays off with $14 worth of savings later on. And the savings include, you know, other special education costs, additional educational costs. And they also include, on the more negative end of the spectrum, prison costs. You know, you educate those kids early, you get them able to read, they become, you know, members of the working community, we're much more invested, and we have fewer jails, you know, it balances out all over. Kids who are brought up to, you know, reading at grade level at the early primary grades end up saving the same taxpayers money for special ed services later on in middle school and high school. So just from a sort of cold-hearted dollars and cents perspective, money spent throughout the educational spectrum is good for business, it's good for the taxpayers in New Hampshire. Are there other of our legislators who have been so good to come here and listen? Yes, please, please come up to the microphone.
Chris, why don't you identify yourself again?
My name is, my name is Chris Munson, and I'm, as I said in my introduction, I'm recently elected as a representative from Hampton. What I didn't mention is I'm also a school board member, I'm on the winner card at school board, so I feel your pain. You know, in a, in a perfect world, and I ran on a platform support- You know, in a perfect world, and I ran on a platform supporting education, because I do think it's one of the most important investments we can make in our collective future. In a perfect world, I think we would all like to see all of our funding requirements met. And unfortunately, I don't think that's reality. So we're going to have to make some tough choices, and it's one of the things that, you know, I've already been hearing very clearly from the people in Concord, that we can't have everything, we're going to have to make some tough choices. So I guess I'd be very interested in hearing from this board, what are your priorities? You know, I know Superintendent Morgan identified a few areas of concern. You know, if you have to prioritize what your needs are, what are those priorities?
That is a good question. It's not something that we as a board can give you a single answer on, but I guess I would hand up to individual boards and board members to comment on that list.
I would just like you to keep the promises that you made. So if you said you'd give us forty percent, give us forty percent. If you said you'd give us a hundred percent, give us a hundred percent. But if you only said that you was thirty-one percent and you guaranteed us a hundred percent, that's not okay.
That raises one of the questions we talked a lot about when we did this a year ago, and we should probably touch on again, which is that we are in the process of building our budgets now. The legislature is going to start its business shortly in the new year, changing laws that may have an effect immediately on the budget that our districts will pass in March. So there may be changes in terms of the law, the budget that's passed at the state level that go into effect and become known after we set our budgets, which is a problem, to say the least. Patrick?
I was going to make a similar point in terms of priorities from my own perspective, I guess in the Exeter School Board, I think my priority is to try to keep the class size manageable. There's just such close ties with strong educational experience and having that student-teacher ratio be manageable. The thing that's particularly problematic, we make decisions. Most of our cuts, if we make any cuts, it's going to be personnel if we're left with a deficit at the end. And I think one of the problems that Kate just mentioned, and we spoke about this last year, is that the legislative process and the local process are out of sync, so that we make decisions, budget decisions, based on an assumption of funding, and sometimes those funding decisions aren't made until June, let's say. We pass a budget in the local community in March, and then those budget assumptions change in June, all of a sudden there's a deficit. And I know there's a legislative avenue, we could go back to the voters and have a special election, but realistically, it's very difficult to marshal support for that and to really educate people to participate in that. So we're left with this deficit, and because our budgets are so lean, we're talking about cutting positions, and that's when it affects that student-teacher ratio.
To answer Mr. Munson's question, at least from my perspective, Chris, I think I want to meet the needs of the students entrusted to us as much as we can, and that's more of a global statement, it's a vision, it's a philosophical statement. We have, we are fortunate here, we talked about the Seco School of Technology, but we also have an adult education program that's extremely effective when we get the students going through our adult education program and really go back, as Kate Miller was saying, to contribute to our society as great citizens. We have an alternative program. The co-op of the school board has been very supportive of charter schools, very supportive of the Great Bay leaning charter school, because we know that the charter school, it probably has about one hundred and fifty students today in grades eight to twelve, serves a different population than the seventeen hundred and fifty students at Exeter High School, we're very supportive of that. And I think that the idea of trying to meet the needs of those students is very, very important to this board, especially trying to keep kids in school till they're eighteen, trying to meet their needs with the eighteen-year-old dropout rate. A lot, the superintendent in Manchester, Tom Brennan, is a very good friend of mine, and I've said publicly before, I don't want to get down the Manchester road. And by that, I mean I don't want to have class sizes in high thirties and low forties. So that's a major priority for me, Mr. O'Day said, and in trying to meet the needs of those students, we have diversity, as they do in many, many communities around the state, don't get me wrong, but we really have established a school system that is among the best in the state, and we want to continue to do that. And it's hard, it's hard sometimes balancing these numbers. But I think that the idea of going forward as best we can and trying to, if we had to prioritize, if we had to cut classes, we could do that. But you look at some of our class numbers at high school right now, they're already growing. The co-op board has cut classes at high school because we didn't have enough students in those classes, and that's been an issue for us. We want to try to maintain positive, excellent, comprehensive, and even a rigorous education is our mission statement.
Can I ask you something else, actually?
Yes, and then I'll go to our two representatives.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to see what they, because I want to make sure my perspective on this is clear, is that I certainly appreciate that it's difficult, what the legislature does with trying to balance all these different needs that are out there, and I don't think any of us, well, at least I don't personally expect the state to be able to fully fund every possible wish list need that we have, no more than I expect the local community to be able to do that. But what's difficult is when the state makes decisions after the fact, then it's disempowering to the local community. Some communities may decide they want to fund education at higher levels, and we set a budget for that, and we talk with our community, we involve them in the process, they may decide to put more money on the table, or they may decide that they want cuts. But when those decisions are made based on assumptions, and then that rug is pulled out from underneath them, it just takes local control out of that process. I think that's the part that's particularly difficult.
Representative Lockard, and then Senator Stiles, please.
Hi, I'm Adam Lockard from Exeter. Having a room full of superintendents sitting here, I just can't help but ask you a question that's been on my mind for a long time.
My colleagues in the back will answer that problem.
All of you. Thinking totally outside the box and knowing that the finite number of educational dollars in the state, and knowing how many SAUs there are in the state of New Hampshire, coming from New York, where we have a county system of educational support, infinitely fewer administrative-level positions and a different system of organization, but if you thought about where the dollars went, perhaps that's a way, or that's an avenue that we really need to look at. We're not going to end up magically getting more money in New Hampshire, I really don't think so. But I wonder if people had ever looked at that and said, gee, maybe this is the year we could analyze the whole system of how many SAUs are, or fifty-something?
Oh, no, no, over ninety.
Ninety.
Over ninety. I'll give you a little lesson on that later on. The bottom line is the local control in New Hampshire is alive and well. And back years and years ago, we used to only have, you know, about ten SAUs, you remember the visit, basically one borough town in a lot of ways. It's been the local people, the local control that have created all of these individual districts is of local control. We've got a lot. But you know what I would say, and I think that the state of Maine has gone through trying to consolidate SAUs, you know, New Hampshire has not done that. But I would say I would like to see, with all the respect to our legislative colleagues, New Hampshire, as many of us know, have the third-largest legislative body in the Western world. You know, only the U.S. Congress and the British House of Parliament have more legislators than we do, and I might like to, in a...
But I'll put my salary up against anybody else.
Exactly. Right. Donna's point is really good about salary, but I also talk about mileage. You know, I'm from Brooklyn, I can tell you that some of the folks in the north, I mean, make a heck of a lot of money when it comes to mileage reimbursement that coming down in Concord. But I would like to challenge the legislature in the same way that they're challenging us, you know, can you reduce those numbers? Do you know how hard it is for us to deal with four hundred and twenty-four people? You know, it's like almost having a school board of thirty-three, to which I respond, but I think that there are many, many issues about that, but I think that consolidating the SAUs is not out of the question. But I would like to consolidate issues and consolidate school boards, because one of my big issues, you know, with all the respect, is I get along great with, well, I'll say all these people, for the most part, I don't know where it landed, we just got on the board tonight. But the point is that if you can reduce the number of school boards around the state, you can probably reduce the number of superintendents, and that's an issue. To really think, as I said earlier, I have eight school boards. Now, I've got three assistant superintendents, which is really important and helpful, but people demand local services too. And I know my colleagues want to get up to the microphone and talk about the number, Kathleen Murphy, you like to always have an opinion on that. Kathleen Murphy used to work in the State Department of Education.
Is that my job that you just gave away by saying that we should consolidate?
Consolidate, you are an outgrowth of that, you know.
I am.
Barbara Munson used to have three districts, you're one now, she's lucky, you know, so...
I was going to comment on the number of legislators. Constitutionally, we can have less than four hundred, and I can't remember the number, I think it's three sixty.
When was the last time that was brought forward? Never in my life.
I can't remember, but we can have something like three sixty, and I'm just pointing that out. I'm not saying the four hundred is the right number, but I'm just pointing that out.
You'd still have one in Canada if you did that.
But if you take the Canadian salaries paid to legislators, it's well above the...
Thank you, your point as well, thank you.
Kathleen Murphy, Superintendent of School of Houston, since I'm the recent newcomer to an SAU, but it really was an issue of local control, and the community decided that they felt that it would be beneficial to their schools and their system to have their own SAU office. One of the interesting things that we uncovered while we were in Hampton these past years is that our costs are actually less than the costs that they pay to the SAU twenty-one. So we were able to run an organization in Hampton that cost the taxpayers less money. So the fallacy that it's more money and higher overhead costs just doesn't pan out. And from the point of view of our school board, and I wish they were here now, I think that they would tell you that the services they receive and the attention that they have to their curriculum and their students is far greater, and therefore I think it's going to be a difficult sell. Across the state, and I'm right, I spent four years as the Department of Ed, working in the Division of Instruction, and for the last four or five years, we've had other towns and cities that have broken away from very large school districts for that very same reason, and the costs, again, have not been overwhelming so that they were paying more money. So I'm not sure that that's the place to go to get the money. But can I make a couple of comments while I'm here? I'd ask the legislators to think about a couple of issues that are of great concern to myself and to my colleagues. And the first one is the Department of Ed. I spent four years there, so it's a terrific organization, and the reason I bring that up is that the Department of Ed has been stripped down to the bare bones. We don't have as a resource, and really, the Department of Education, like Health and Human Services, is a resource to our state. We don't have that resource. We don't have a consultant in mathematics, in science, in language arts, and I guess we do have one in social services, but we don't have those consultants, those resources to be able to use that in the field. The department has been stripped of members of the staff in order to cut budgets, and I think that that's a disservice to our communities. The other issue I wanted to bring up tonight, two issues, one was charter schools. I think my colleagues and I would all stand here in support of the great work that our charter schools are doing. They provide alternative pathways for youngsters, and kids have been successful because of charter schools, and I think that's awesome. But I also have a tough time just this past fall, when the legislators voted to give almost five million dollars more to charter schools so that they could continue, and yet we're not funding catastrophic aid, we're not fully funding, we're not even funding building aid, we don't even have building aid for the last two years, and we're not funding career and technical education to a hundred percent. And yet, the legislator pretty quickly, within a month or two, appropriated four and a half million dollars for charter schools. That's hard for a public school educator. And the last one, and I really do thank you for having this opportunity, is CHINS. You're going to hear a lot about the CHINS, and my colleagues struggle with this issue. We have no alternative, we have no place to go when we're trying to find good solutions for kids and families who struggle and who have challenges that are beyond our means. And I would urge our legislators to take a very careful look at the CHINS program in reinstating the funding. Right now, we only have fifty youngsters that receive funding and receive services, fifty youngsters. I've spent the last three years working on children's behavioral health, mental health, and I can attest that we had more children in a state hospital than fifty youngsters. So if you were to pick an issue that you would like to take a hard look at, I would strongly urge you to look at the CHINS program.
And just to definitely...
Thank you for those few minutes, I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Just to CHINS, is children in need of services, Health and Human Services, Maggie Bishop, I don't want to add anything to that, or...
And I'd like to go to Senator Stiles. We do happen to have on our board, a highly talented board, Maggie Bishop, who's the head of the Department of Children, Youth and Families. So Maggie, do you want to comment, Donna?
Obviously, I support the taking a look at CHINS, the change in the statute has definitely impacted the local schools specifically around truancy issues, in that there continues to be a truancy statute, but there's no teeth to the statute anymore to actually hold accountable the truancy issues. And then the point made previously around just the need to serve families where they have youth who are experiencing difficulties. So clearly, that cut has impacted to the local level who don't have the ability to provide some services. So it was a cut that not only impacted the service delivery to kids and families, but also then the ability for the local districts to respond to those families who are looking through schools or Health and Human Services for some assistance.
Thank you. Senator Stiles, and then Mr. Munson. Thank you, thank you for your patience.
Should be very dear, Senator, someplace.
Well, when I started up here, I just want to speak to one thing, but after Superintendent Murphy came forward, I need to tell you what a great job she's doing. I am from Hampton, and it is wonderful, absolutely wonderful, the Hampton split away from twenty-one.
Editorially, that's...
And I need to tell you also that when they went through that process, the school board at that time did an excellent job in establishing a new process, and so we had rewritten all of the withdrawal statutes to accommodate that because they did such a great job. So that's kudos to Hampton. As far as the CHINS goes, I had the privilege of redrafting all of the truancy statutes when I served in the House, and the cut to CHINS really hurt our truancy offices. So we have tried to find ways to correct that, and that will be one of my agenda writings this year, is to find ways to help us get back to alleviate some of that problem. As far as the Department of Education goes, I had a conversation today, and I believe that the commissioner is putting in for a math person, a reading specialist, and a behavioral specialist. So I will watch that, because it goes through the finance process, and hopefully we'll be able to keep all of them in the department, because the Department of Education really hasn't cut extremely tight, I mean, there's so few people there that you can talk to all of them in one setting. What I really came up to speak to you about was the school building aid, because last year during the session, we were privileged to lift the moratorium on the school building aid, and in the legislation, it does say that those that are currently getting school building aid will be the first to receive the money. There would be no new money given out until you guys have been addressed. Right now, it's about forty-three million dollars that is owed, and it drops off anywhere from one to two million dollars every year. And so the new formula, if you will, for school building aid speaks specifically to instructional facilities. So if you want to build some grandiose place, you can do that on local money, but if you're looking for school building aid, then it speaks specifically to instructional. And it also looks at giving you the money upfront so that you actually bond less, gets the state off the hook in one year. So initially, there won't be a lot of money in the first couple of years, I think there's only going to be around seven or eight million dollars that's going to be available, so that's basically only going to fund remodeling for some schools. But as soon as we get everything paid down, then the monies will be there. So those are the couple of the things that I wanted to speak to you about. I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Kate, do you have something to comment?
Thank you, this is a great discussion, I appreciate the fact that you could all make it here tonight. I do want to get back to the point I think that Patrick was making earlier, and I believe Kate and others. I think this is the third year we've met with the legislature. I think this is the third year we've met with the legislators. And I think the biggest issue for me, as a school board member, and I know other board members feel the same way, is this notion of being, our budgets being out of sync with legislation. And we keep talking about, this is the third year, and I'm kind of a simple guy, so I think that, you know, perhaps the legislature could develop some sort of litmus test. When you're passing a law or proposing a law change, or funding issues, or what have you, anything that would impact a school board budget that's already in progress, that you postdate the law, move it ahead. I don't know if that can be done or not. You're shaking your head, no, that can't be done. I find that hard to believe. I mean, I think that there should be a mechanism to make, to put us in sync so that we're not being, you know, affected after we've already been passing our budget. So there's gotta be a solution. And that's the simplest solution that I can think of.
Do you want to talk about the meeting we went to?
No, go ahead.
Donna, can you give us some insight here?
Well, not much inside, I'm gonna start, hope that Senator Stiles picks up on it because she's the Education Governor. But we did, after last year's meeting where we talked about this, we did have a subcommittee that got together and looked at the statute and looked at what we could do. It was a really depressing meeting because we cannot bind over a future legislative body. So that's one of the problems. But what we can do, and I remember this coming out of the meeting, and what we don't do well, is put fiscal notes, true fiscal notes, on pieces of legislation. I think that that was lacking in the last session. So I think decisions were made in an atmosphere of cut without, I think, really looking at, and that's what I hear you asking, that if we're going to make a budget decision, that it's very important that we know exactly how it's going to impact our communities. And I think that a lot of us don't. And, you know, that's the pitfall of having 400, is that we aren't all as well-versed in all the things that we need to be. So I would have the expectation, and I would ask you to put the demand on your reps that they not vote on anything without a fiscal note that tells them very precisely. And I would actually ask you all to look at the fiscal notes on this legislation too because there's often a disagreement about what those numbers are, and we know that we can all get numbers to say sometimes what we like them to say. So that's just my two cents, but I know you probably have more details.
No, you're absolutely right, Donna. You can't bind another legislative body. But since we passed the budget in the first session, we might look at the fact that any changes we wanted to make didn't take place until the second year of the session, which would then give you some time to look at your own budgets.
That's what I'm talking about.
That is better.
As far as the fiscal notes go, those are usually drafted by the department. So if it has to do with education, it's the Department of Education that makes the recommendations to the LBA and Health and Human Services, et cetera. So I don't know how we really could get information from all of the local school boards, if you would, unless it came through your lobbyist and did it that way. But that's one thing we might look at, Donna, is if we make changes that we could make them implement in the second year.
But then we're back to the first, well, we'll look at it.
We can look at it.
Representative Romney, and then Kate, thank you.
Hand up.
I think he's gonna be...
I only have 50, I hope there's enough for everybody in the audience. Yeah, a couple of things. Yes, after, after we met last time, we did have a group that got together to try to look at the dates.
Do you want them to have copies?
Huh?
I think I've just given all the copies away, don't you?
No, no, I have them. And it was virtually impossible to general fiscal years. There's a reason why the schools have their fiscal years to where they are, and there's a reason why the state has their fiscal years to where they are. So we tried, but it didn't look like there was a solution to that. In terms of the LGC issue, yes, you know, after the Secretary of State uncovered that problem, we did pass some legislation, but we couldn't get the House and the Senate to agree. We're still, there should be some legislation coming out to try to plug some of those holes in the LGC going forward. And I came to my committee raising needs, and I was in those subcommittee meetings with Secretary of State as we were going through that. The real reason I'm standing up here is to talk about the real ticking time bomb that we all have facing, not just as the state legislators, or it's every citizen in the state that is our pension system. Our state pension system is $4.3 billion unfunded, which makes us the worst unfunded state pension system in the country. Now, if you look at my handout, and I tried to put everything on one piece of paper here, and I went in the top part, I went and I said, okay, I went by decade, '71, '81, '91, 2001. You can see what we were paying. I have two, the two that impact this board are the employees and then the teachers. And you can see, in the good old days, the employer contribution was only, had to be 2.5. It was in the 2% to 3%, 2% to 4% range. And the teachers, the same thing, 2% to 4% range. The problem was, that wasn't enough, obviously. Because we're down the road now, and we're at a $4.3 billion problem. And why was that? Well, first, it was a bad methodology that was being used for many years. We increased the benefits during the good years. What I mean by good years, when the rates of return were good in the stock market, everybody said, oh, we're all geniuses, we can start spending more of that money. The only problem is they're bad years, and you're not supposed to start doing that, and that actuarial, and that's what was happening. And then also, we started to say to towns and the school boards, guess what? We didn't have to put in as much. And that benefited everybody, but not really. It was a problem that was kicked down the road. So my comment, when it turns to yellow there, in the 2011, this current legislature, we did some pension reform. And the yellow was where those percentages were gonna go, 11, you know, the 11 to 11.48, and then the 13%, 13%. We did pension reform, and then we kind of curved the curve down, and the employee was like 8.8, this where we are right now, 11.3 on the teacher's side, where we are right now. But now, wow, what's gonna happen next year? And the year after, the gray there, we're going up to 10.77 and 14.16. And I know you're all upset about that. Well, guess what? That's out of the hands of the legislature. That is actuaries. That is because, if you go to my four asterisk note, the rate of return, the assumption the actuaries had up to this point in time was that we were getting an 8.5% rate of return on the money, and that was in fantasy land. So they've reduced that down to 7.75%.
To dreamland. To dreamland.
And that's still dreamland. Okay? But that's why, that's why we had that spike, okay? And why I'm up here is to say, I was on, I was pointing to the committee that we met this fall on looking at moving away from a defined benefit plan to a defined contribution plan. And that's very emotional, I know. But my footnote here says, two states have done that, Michigan and Alaska. And guess who did it in 1986? The university system of New Hampshire. And guess what? There's only about, and they phased it in, they phased in all people who had defined benefit plans, they kept their defined benefit plans. And then all new employees at state university were in the defined contribution plans. And there's only about 300 or 400 employees left still at the university that are receiving the benefits from the old plan. So all I'm trying to say is that we all have to keep an open mind about this, okay? The thing, the plan that we were looking at was not to affect current employees, and it was a go-forward plan. Like all new hires would be in a defined contribution plan instead of a defined benefit plan. Now, I think when we get back to Congress, there might be some willingness to look at a hybrid plan. And a lot of states have adopted hybrid plans, kind of a, you know, half benefit, defined benefit and half defined contribution. There might be some will, there might be some political will to look at that. So, and there's also, way down the bottom, I gave the options, and don't ask me to explain all those, but there are different mixes that you can look at. The only other comment I'll make is, you say, well, why is the rate so high? Most of it's in that U A A L, unfunded actuarial accrued liability. So our normal cost, let's say for an employee, is 9.48%. But we had to add on top of that for the sins of the past, 7.96%. So the total cost of the plan for the next two years is gonna be 17.44%. Now, the members, the employees at this point, are contributing 7%. That leaves 10.44% for the employer to pick up, plus the employer medical portion. So that's where the 10.77% comes from. But you can see, a good percentage of that is making up for the sins of the past. And I wish there was an easy solution to that, and there isn't. In my humble opinion, it's gonna get worse before it gets better unless we act. Because I don't think that 7.75% is gonna hold. You know, I've read articles that said, you know, from, you know, the rate of return is really more like 6% these days, average, than it is. The old standby used to be 8% when you talk to, you know, financial analyst-type person. And so, the other thing that's forcing this, one last thought, is that the legislature did pass a bill a bunch of years ago that said that we want to see that unfunded liability go away by June 30th of 2039. So that's forcing it, so the actuaries see that, and it's saying that that's our, we have to work towards that number to get that, to get the number down. So to that date. So what I'm asking for is, as this year goes on, and as pension issues come up, that if we form a subcommittee of the SAU, I would like to be able to be in communication with the school boards here to see, get your input as to any potential changes that we may be considering. Thank you.
Thank you, that's great. Very helpful.
I have one point of clarification that some people may not know that may be listening. Mr. Romney, could you briefly tell us the difference between the defined benefit and the defined contribution?
Defined benefit is, you're guaranteed the benefit, okay? You're guaranteed, let's say you retire, the man says you're due $20,000 a year in pension, you'll be guaranteed that $20,000 in pension for life, okay? Defined contribution is, we're contributing, you're putting it in basically a 401-type plan, and you're subject to the risk. It is a bit more riskier for the employee, no question, but you're subject to the risk. And then if you, if the market doesn't well, you, that's your money. If it doesn't, then you take the loss. So the only thing that's guaranteed for the employees is that the school district will match a certain amount into that fund. And what we talked about, and I've conquered, the one thing we talked about is that from a school board perspective, what you're all looking for is certainty. You want to know what it's gonna cost. And certainly, a defined contribution plan will give you that certainty. And now, you know, we're not talking about next year now. This is gonna take a long time to phase in. And, because we, we didn't talk about saying, one day, everybody goes on a defined benefit plan, goes on a defined contribution plan. That would never fly. We understand that, that it's just too emotional. We're all thinking about the future, and how do we, how do we start? Because the first step, you have to take the first step to say, we want to try to solve this problem long-term. And to me, that's the only way, because when you look around the world, hate to bring this up, you know, you see countries going bankrupt, you see cities going bankrupt, you see municipalities going bankrupt because, pretty much because of their pension plans. And the defined, and I have to say all the time, defined benefit plan does not work. Corporations realized this years ago. One by one, they get out of the defined benefit plan because the actuarial plan doesn't ever seem to work.
Thank you very much.
All right, yes.
Trying to tie both of the last two in one, one comment or two comments. Maybe even going back further to what's the most important to us. So certainly balancing our budget and numbers are important to us. But I think I'm speaking on behalf of everybody sitting in front of you today. Our students are important to us. That's our bottom line. And I know we have to balance budgets, and we're gonna do it. But if we have to make cuts, hopefully, it won't be to programs and personnel and to staff and faculty, because they take care of our children. And so, it's not just about having finite numbers, it's about taking care of the human people who are professionals and educated and have a wealth of experience and a wealth of education. I mean, our teachers, most of them have master's degrees, some of them have CAGs degrees, some of them have doctorate degrees. And they've put that time in because they're taking care of my kid. So I'll make sure that we take care of them, because my kid is just in fifth grade, and he's got a long way to go. And I also want to thank the people who were here a year ago, who spent time really thinking about what we had to say. It makes us happy, and it's time worth well spent. And so when you add those fiscal notes or fiscal responsibilities to your bill, I think that that's a great step. And although you can't put this in writing on the bill, I hope you can put it into student, into student terms. Because those kids were here speaking to us today because the decisions that we make collectively affect our future. So it's the decisions that you make up in Concord that we make at the co-op that you're making in Hampton. They're affecting our kids and our future. So there is a fiscal, when you make decisions, you need to know the impact fiscally, but you need to know the human impact too, and that's why we're up here. So I would just like us all to keep that in mind.
Thank you. Johnny, and then I'd like to wrap up this portion fairly soon after this. If there are any other of our elected officials, I'd be happy to hear from them. So Johnny Reynolds, and then go back to you.
I just had a very general comment, which is that I just wanted to encourage all of you, and also to ask you to encourage any of you legislators that are going up to the state to have the courage of your convictions to speak out for what you believe in. Because I know there have been very loud voices up in the state in the last at least year or two. And if you have some strong opinions, I'd just encourage you to voice them out. Thank you.
Yes, Senator.
Chris.
It's Chris, would you like to give us some time to comment?
Yeah, there's just two other points that I wanted to try to make. And as far as the retirement costs are concerned, I mean, that's, I know from my own experience on the retirement school board, that's the big gorilla. I mean, that's what drove the increase that we were facing this year. And I just think it's important that everybody here understands, and the people that are watching at home understand, that one element that has changed the landscape for retirement costs is the amount of participation that the state has been willing to make in funding that program. When the program was initially set up, the enticement to towns to join the program was a commitment on the part of the state to pay 40% of the cost. That was then lowered to 35%. It stayed at 35% for many years. It was lowered to, I think it was 25% four or five years ago. It was scheduled to go back up to 35%. And then the state eliminated that payment. And that's for some of the reasons that I talked about earlier, about, you know, trying to balance the budget. So I think it's just important that everybody understands that, that that's another element that's driving the cost up for the towns. Because the portion that the state was paying... that's driving the cost up for the towns because the portion that the state was paying was directly assumed by school districts and towns in the state. So that was, that's the one issue. The second issue is to your, to your point about speaking out and having to voice your convictions, and now I'm going to take a step back and put my school board hat on. I think all of us as school board members have an obligation to speak out as well and to really make the case in our communities that education is important. It can't all be on the backs of, we can't, we can't look to the state level people to carry that freight. It has to be a combined effort. We have to have a combined commitment to education and in a sense, we need to cover each other's backs. The school board members need to speak out on behalf of education. The state legislatures need to speak out on behalf of education and back up what the school board members are saying and really, you know, make this a priority for the state. If we're not working together and being equally vocal in terms of what's important to us, we won't get what I think we all want, which is quality education for our kids.
Great, that's a wonderful note to end on. Last comment, okay.
I want to say one more thing just in the spirit of conversation. I was struck by something that Superintendent Murphy said about charter schools and I don't speak for my board, I just speak as one member of this board and I think I say this because we're not a monolith here, but personally, I'm happy with what the state has done in supporting charter schools. They are public schools, they provide different models, there are students that are going to those schools and this district has benefited a lot from the role of B-LACs, G-BEXs, the C-Clas Charter School and a number of other initiatives across the state. And my understanding is that those programs aren't fully funded as well. There was a recent moratorium on future funding or whatever the proper terminology is because I think that's gone back and forth. So I understand that there's limited funds and we could start to look at this as a zero-sum game, but even though we're not responsible for those funds directly as elected school boards, those are still things that benefit our students and our kids and I'm personally a supporter of charter schools as well, as an alternative model for some students.
Great. Yes, one other superintendent, Blake, thank you.
Thank you. If you don't mind, I'm going to address the legislators directly. You folks have an incredibly difficult job because there's no doubt about it and I want to say thank you for your service. What I would ask though, as you, as you begin your process this year, is to talk with us, talk with the superintendents, talk to folks in your local communities about the legislation that comes before you. Every year, there's a deluge of bills that impact education and I can count on my hands the number of times where I've been called and asked, "What does this do for your school district? What does this mean?" You folks can't possibly understand all of the implications of every education bill that's going to come forward. But having discussions with superintendents at the local level, we can help you to understand what those local, what those decisions that you're making in Concord are going to do to our local communities. I don't think any of you were elected, nor took office, to have an impact, a negative impact on any of your constituents. That's not what you got into office for. And so I would ask that you keep the lines of communication open so that we can have that dialogue and you can make those votes in Concord when they come up with a full understanding of what it is exactly that you're voting on. Because too many times in the past, we hear after the fact, "I did what? I didn't know that it was going to have that impact." But by then, it's too late. The votes have been cast and we're stuck picking up the pieces for years to come. Please talk to us. Thank you.
All right, and now for our final comment. I'm going to have to close this down because we do have a whole bunch of other things on our agenda after this. Travis.
We could keep going all night if we keep letting all of us talk, we all know that. But I just, hearing that last comment, it really struck me and I wanted to ask a favor of all of you as well. You folks here are probably the legislators that we need to talk to, least about education. But you have four hundred and however many peers that aren't here tonight and so I would ask that not only do you talk to the superintendents, talk to your constituents, which you do anyway, but share that knowledge with the other people up there in Concord because my guess is there is a majority of them that don't have the same interest in education that you folks have and are willing to share with us here this evening. I mean, I know there's, there's not a single thing that I can tell Senator Stiles about education. It's the opposite. I could get a doctor dissertation from Senator Stiles on education, but the other folks in Concord are the ones that we need you to talk to as well. So share what you learned from, from the superintendents, from your constituents, from your board members on education and help convince everybody else up there about what's important. So I just, I love that with you.
Thomas, go ahead. Thank you, Mike. We just have to do a reality check here for all of you. Except for Senator Stiles and any reps that serve on the Education Committee in the House, we are not going to have your education bills on our radar as quickly as we need to. And so I would throw that back in your court and say, "You need to call us and say, 'Here are the six bills that we're watching right now.'" My chief Kane in Exeter, the police chief, did that for me. He called me up, he said, "Here are eight bills that I really need you to read and I really need you to vote against because I don't feel this is in the best interests of our police department." And that got them on my radar. We get a thousand bills. We serve, we know every bill in our committee backwards and forwards and we may know of some bills in some other committees, but I have to tell you, more often than not, your bills are not going to be on our radar as soon as they need to be. So I'm asking you superintendents to call us up and tell us those bills and we can go on the LGC's website or where else, wherever we need to go, to read the story that you're putting out behind them. But don't wait till we get on the House floor and we're voting on them. So, sorry, but I just need to cut that in. It sounds like we all have plenty of work left for us. Okay, so I would like to thank all of you very much for coming. I really appreciate all the time that you've put in and will be putting in going forward. I just also quickly, just want to make sure that if anybody didn't sign in tonight, we want to make sure that we have your names so that we can properly acknowledge you in our minutes in another fashion for coming in. Thank you so much for being here tonight, legislators and public alike. Thank you. Yes, thank you.